Welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for July 12th, 2021. Would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for bringing us through this pandemic, for the success of our school system, the success of our students and our teachers through this pandemic, and we look forward to a very prosperous year, once again, with your blessings. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, citizens address the board. Do we have anyone sign in?
Yep.
All right, number four, approval of the work session agenda. Our agenda items before us, could I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries four zero. At this time, I'll turn over to Dr. Pulis for the items of information.
Good evening, everyone. Our first area on our goal area one, student success. I'll talk about two different things here. First is our comprehensive review of our high school students transcripts. Right now, we have teachers as well as a retiree that is working with Mr. Willis, and they're going through every student's transcript, and they're scrubbing them to make sure that students have the accuracy that they're supposed to have, as well as to identify courses that they may need in the future, especially going into block in the fall. We want to make sure that we're taking care of our students. So, this is, uh, this is top to bottom, bottom to top, total review. Uh, they started today, and they're doing a great job. It's a, it's, it's an eye-opener for some, because there's an awful lot in, you know, involved in actually reviewing transcripts. And so, we want to make sure that we do it right for our students. So, that's our, that's our first thing up on our student success. Second is that, uh, just to announce the open house, we have scheduled right now for Thursday, August the 5th. We plan to hold that between five and seven. Now, we're, last year, we did the virtual open house. This year, we want to open our doors again, but we're also still going to offer virtual. Teachers will still post videos, so that if, if we have people who don't feel comfortable coming in, um, in that type of setting, they'll still get that opportunity to come in. So, uh, we also are advising our teachers that may have students at the schools, that they can go through that entire week at any time, visit those teachers there, but we need them, uh, at their duty post for open house for everybody else from five to seven.
Now, when you just, real quick, when you said that they're gonna do videos, and it's gonna be an option to watch those virtual, that's just for open house. We will be open for school.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, our kids will be 100% in the classroom.
No doubt. Again, I just want to make sure that they, I'm drawing a distinction between what we did last year for open house.
Right.
And, you know, last year, again, the only thing we did was the videos, so that we could say, here's my teacher, and the teacher said a little bit about him. We're gonna offer both opportunities, but we're, our doors will be open for open house. Now, for school itself, uh, we will advise that, you know, once, once we're in session, um, that Monday, the 9th, I believe, is the date, once the students come in off the buses or get dropped off, parent visitation down the hallways, that's, that's not permissible any longer. So, they need to come to open house to meet your teachers. Okay? And we go from there. So, any other questions on those two specific areas for student success, open house, and our transcript review? If not, we'll talk about organizational effectiveness. The first one up here is the millage rate. Just to, this is usually the time of year that we start setting the millage. And we're still pending the final tax digest, property digest, and, um, we're hoping to get that soon. So, we would expect that, that within the next, either this month or next month, we'll be able to look at that, review our budget, and that has already been approved, and establish what the millage should be for, for the next year. Um, we'd, last year, I think we didn't establish it until September, based on everything that was going on, and, and the, the changes that were happening with the state with the budget. So, we're hoping to, again, roll into it. It does look like there might be a 2% to 3% increase off of the preliminary look. I was expecting more. I was expecting a lot more. So, we are asking for them to continue to review and dig, and, but appeals are in the process, and hopefully, we'll get that back, and, and we'll be able to assess what our taxes are. Any questions on, on that portion? All right, the next area up here would be our school preparations. And so, as we look for school to start up, uh, we've held a great meeting today, now that the staff and faculty are back, um, and to discuss a lot of different things. Talking about immunization for students going into the grades, it's requirement of law, what they must have. We're talked about just generally the cleanliness of the school. We'll talk a little bit later about the COVID, and how that's gonna line up for next year, which will be greatly different than last year as far as protocol. Um, but as well, just making sure that all the, the classrooms are ready, et cetera. Mr. Maso will talk about that in just a few minutes. The next area up here, um, as we look at this, is the minutes from last time. If you'll take a look at the minutes, if you have any questions about anything that's been documented in the minutes, just let myself or, or Ms. Lane know, so we get those corrected, and then we'll approve those at the next board meeting. We should have three minutes provided for you for last month, because we had that called meeting to do the personnel. All right, next area up here is discussion of the June 21 financial report. Um, I'm gonna let Tammy run through that with you. I will tell you that effective 1 July, the law went into effect that was implemented last year, talks about all of the other things that we're supposed to now provide to the board. We've been providing it all along, um, so, we're gonna continue just to highlight the areas, but the entire report you get covers what the new law requires. Tammy?
Yes, I would just like to ping back off of that and let you know that you will see some additional inserts and sections in there. So, if you have any questions over anything that you need, just let me know, and I'll answer the questions. Okay, so, page one, general operating account. For June 30th, we began the month with 4.4 million. We had receipts of just over a million, leaving us with 5.4 million in the general operating account. We had dispersments of 2.6 million, which included a transfer of a million dollars to the local projects account, and a transfer to the energy lease that service account of $300,000, leaving us with 2.8 million. Okay, onto revenues, on page 44. Okay, period to date, we have received 14.8 million, which is actually a little over. It's 103% of our budget, and 14.2 million. Um, you, if you look down at the federal revenues, you will see, um, an amount of $95,000, and that is where we actually received the check for the federal revenue sharing for our, uh,
Refuge.
Wildlife.
Good.
That we cannot collect taxes on. Okay, onto expenses, on page 46. Um, period to date expenditures, I do have all of the accruals in. I expect we will still receive some end of the month, June, um, June expenses that we'll still be posting through August, um, but we have posted 14.8 million of our 14.8 million. We're at 99.55% of our budget expenditures, so we're right on budget. Okay, and fund balance, page 51. We currently have a fund balance of just over 20,000 for the general operating fund. Okay, page 131 is the East Loss Projects Account. We have $483. Local Projects Account, we have 1.4 million. The Bond Sicking Account, $4.65. The Debt Service Account, we began the month with just over a million. We received $144,177 for the June East Loss.
Which is really good.
Yes. And we currently have just over 1.2 billion. Uh, those June receipts were up 23.8% over last June. So, we're getting back to normal. And finally, page 141, in the debt, energy lease debt service account, uh, we had the transfer in of 300,000, and we have $500,610 in the energy lease account. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
All right, barring any questions on that, we'll jump to the next one. And then, we'll talk about facilities. If Mr. Maso will come up, please?
Great afternoon, board. It's a pleasure to come before you this evening. We'll start off with our facilities update and what's going on. Um, I had a meeting with KBS this aft, this morning, and talked to them about where we are with our, um, floor cleaning and the cleaning of the classrooms, and we're in a very good position. All of the middle school has been taken care of. They just started on the high school, but they're running two separate crews, so they're not splitting the crews up. They have a crew that's working specifically at the middle, um, at the elementary school, and a school, a crew that's specifically working at the high school. They just started the high school due to the beautiful paint job out there from, um, floor to ceiling. So, it's in, um, the high school's gonna look amazing, even more amazing than it did beforehand. So, we're really excited about that.
Yeah, we're not certain that that building has been painted since it was built, what, 17, 18 years ago. I mean, it, it really looks sharp on the inside. We still have more to do, but it really, really looks good.
I don't think it has been painted.
You do?
I don't think it has.
Yeah.
Not that I remember from, um, the times that I've been here. So, it's really, really looking good. It's gonna be a tight schedule. The, the last thing that we've asked them to keep to the last is the carpets. They are going to get to the carpets, but I didn't want to, um, forego making sure that every detail in the classrooms in the hallway was taken care of. And if they have to take that up on the weekend after school has started, that, that's a possibility. I didn't wanna, um, keep that from you. So, um, in really good repair, we're in a good situation for floor cleaning. Next thing on the agenda.
About the surplus buses.
Surplus buses. We will be surplusing three additional buses, um, that are not in good repair, that they are parts buses that we've already done, all, taken all the parts off of, um, that they're just taking up space in our bus yard. So, we will advertise those and put them out for sale and have them removed from the.
We will just need the, the board to approve that, carrying them in surplus, and we'll do that at the next board meeting.
We have to accept bids on those, correct?
We do.
Yes.
We advertise them, and we'll get them out there, and then people will bid on them, and let us know what they have.
As well as our surplus buses, we will be surplusing the greenhouse at the middle school.
We're, we're asking the board to allow us to surplus the greenhouse. That has not been operational in 15 years.
When I was the middle school principal, we attempted to start the refurbish of that. However, it, it got into a place that the cost of really doing a new greenhouse or fixing that one really isn't, um, an investment that we're really ready to make, knowing that we probably, at this point, don't have a full-blown ag program at the, um, uh, middle school. And, um, with our renovations to the, at middle school, with that removed, it's gonna be a whole game changer for, um, the way the place looks, and especially when the new fencing comes around, we'll refence around it. We'll make it look, um, a beautiful, inviting front end. Um, the first initial thing, why would we be getting rid of a greenhouse? It's just not in good repair, and it's not something that, um,
We're upwards of 30 some thousand was one of the estimates we had to get in there and to fix various items on it. That's a lot of money, especially since, again, it's, it literally has been sitting there. Little bit of storage, but.
We're, we're blessed to have a beautiful greenhouse at the, um, high school, which we've taken full advantage of, and it takes a full-time person to manage that, and it's, um, real difficult to manage two greenhouses. So, uh, we'll hope that the board will consider that.
Would the sale of the, um, um, the money, the sale of the greenhouse, would that go back into the ag department, or would that go back into the general fund?
General fund.
The next thing on the list here is the comprehensive communication plan. I'm really excited about where we are with the comprehensive communication plan. We will have, I was assured today by, um, Hastings, that we will have our system up and running Friday. They were, um, intended to have the antennas put on the towers last week. However, Elsa changed that plan, so tomorrow antennas will be added to the towers, and, um, a base station to the, um, transportation department, and we should be receiving radios on Wednesday. And, um, as soon as I can coordinate with the principals, we'll coordinate a training. And so, like I said, by Friday, we'll be able to communicate, and by the following week, we'll have the training, and everybody will have them in hands. Uh, all the buses have been installed with the radios. Um, everything's in order with that. It's coming a, a, along famously, and we're really excited about adding that to our repertoire.
To go back, uh, to, you know, again, the money goes back into the general fund, but if there are needs that need to be reallocated, obviously, we can have those discussions and reestablish the budget for it.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that.
Sure, like.
Tonight, we'll be proposing or asking for approval for our construction manager, and, um,
Are we at that point now? Okay. Mr. Tooten?
Yes, sir.
Can you share the microphone with Mr. Maso, please?
I will.
I will tell you, as, as Mr. Tooten comes up, um, back in May, you know, we approved using a construction manager model for the kitchen project. Uh, we went out and put out a request for a qualified manager. It was advertised correctly, and, uh, we were able to receive proposals from three different, um, companies, and we have reviewed those and rated them, and that's where we're at at this point, is to decide if, uh, like, everything's there that we need. Um, Mr. Braun has looked at the criteria, and we're certifying that it's, that we've done everything the way we're supposed to do. Uh, Mr. Braun, any, any issues at all with what we've done?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Tooten?
Well, I assume everyone has a copy of this.
We can pull it up?
Uh, pull up the very first one? Okay, that's, those are the, those are.
This is just a record of the proposals that we've received, and we did receive three proposals. One from Tyson, RW Tyson Construction, one from,
Pull up the other one. There you go.
RH Tyson Construction.
Blow it up.
One from RW Allen Construction, and one from Copper Construction. Um, as you can see, Tyson's construction was slightly less than Allen's, and Copper Construction was substantially more than those two. Um, the, um, total construction management, uh, fee then of Tyson is the best fee. We rated the proposals according to,
Put the next one in.
Go to the next slide. According to the published criteria, similar to experience, I would report to you that Tyson had offered experience more in line with, uh, what we had requested in terms of the scope of the project, and similar project in, in terms of renovations. Um, RW Allen, I think most of their projects that they submitted were big new schools, nothing wrong with that, except that this is a smaller project, and we thought that renovation in an existing school building was more pertinent. Uh, in terms of project team and performance, I'm sure they can all perform. Um, we have a lot more experience with the, uh, Tyson team, and they are a local team. RW Allen has a Savannah office, and they have an Augusta office, and I'm not familiar with, uh, their, uh, personnel, but they certainly don't have the local presence that Tyson does. And Copper is similar in that regard.
Did, um, just, just to go back and, and ask Mr. Tooten for the record, did Tyson do Todd Grant? Did they come in?
Tyson did Todd Grant.
Okay, so we have experience working with Tyson.
That's correct. Um, fee proposal, I just rated them in, in a straight line. Um, I awarded a three to, uh, Copper and a 10 to Tyson, and then RW Allen's was, uh, just mathematically distributed between, so it's almost as high as Tyson's, as you can see, but that's just the, the variance, uh, between the, uh, uh, proposals. And then, we weighted those factors and scored, and, uh, RH Tyson is 9.75, Allen 8.47, and Copper Construction 6. So, uh, the award according to the criteria would be to Tyson, uh, Construction.
And so, as we've indicated, we advertise this, we've done everything we're supposed to do. The awarding of this contract is, uh, in line with our timeline, and so, uh, I would ask if you can look through this, and if you have any questions for Mr. Tooten or myself, between now and next week, if we could move to approve Tyson as our selection. Forego in any other conclusion from it.
When, when you see the pre-construction fee in the right-hand, uh, column, um, this is the amount that you would, uh, pay to get to, uh, the guaranteed maximum price from Tyson Construction, and that guaranteed maximum price would be a lump sum proposal. So, you're not bound to accept that, but, uh, he will offer it to you, and, and you could accept it or reject it, and as, due to the best of my ability, I would also, uh, comment on whether or not I thought the proposal was, uh, uh, acceptable. But, the process that we're gonna go through is not that Tyson individually prices things however they see fit and come back and give you, uh, a guaranteed maximum price. We're gonna bid all of the subcontract components, so that we'll advertise, and we'll probably open them in your, uh, Board of Education, proposals for electrical, heating and air conditioning, plumbing, uh, masonry, uh, kitchen equipment, uh, finishes, uh, floor finishes, paint, ceilings. So, all of the, uh, bid packages will be developed by Tyson, but they will be bid publicly, so that you have assurance that, that, uh, the, the process was competitive, and that he's bringing you the best price that he can. Still, you're not bound to accept it under this, uh, contract. You are, uh, accepting it or rejecting it is, uh, the decision of the Board of Education when he presents it.
Dr. Pulis, where are we with the, um, selection of the construction manager?
That's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so that, the construction company itself will be the managers?
Right.
I just didn't understand that previously. I thought there would be a single person over it. There would be like the, the liaison between the school system and the construction side itself.
Well, generally, that's the, the way we do it. There, there's no reason that a, there's various types of construction management, and I won't get into all of those. Similar is an agent manager, and that is, he's under contract with you as, for a fee for an agent, and, and has no responsibility for the construction except oversight. And then, he would bring you individual contracts from subcontractors, and that's one form. The, uh, most, uh, the best form of construction management, to me, is lump sum responsibility to a single entity. And this project is, uh, routine enough and simple enough that any experienced general contractor can act as a construction manager. And when we get to the point of the guaranteed maximum price, we're going to then, uh, change the contract form to a lump sum general contract. So, at that point, he'll be acting just as any other general contractor will, and, uh, the contract will be administered just as Todd Grant was administered.
And we decide when or not we're gonna accept that maximum price.
Sure.
In addition to.
I understand your, your confusion, but construction management is a process. It's not necessarily a separate list of, uh, firms that do construction management, though there are some that only do construction management. Most are general contractors.
And this is their bids for just the construction management?
That is correct.
That's right.
That is correct.
Which basically, if it was somebody as Mr. Tooten just described, that was just solely as a contractor, could have also gone in on this and submitted something, but these are the three that we have.
What, what we've done with this, in order to, to identify very specifically what this 200,775 dollar, uh, fee covers, it is detailed by category, project superintendent, home office, labor, travel, every, we've included every expense except the, uh, the building construction cost itself, that is, the subcontract component. So, this is all of the management of the, uh, general contractor. Site cleanup, uh, all, there's an entire list that I can share with you, but it's, it's, uh, it's the best process for construction management that I know of.
Do we have a ballpark or an estimated amount of what this renovation's gonna cost us?
Of course, the budget, as I understand it, is a million dollars. I expect it to cost more than a million dollars, um, and, but not radically more. We're in a strange marketplace now for construction, and there's a shortage of things, and, uh, prices have gone sky-high on some, uh, construction, uh, components. I think bidding this in the fall, and someone just told me this the other day, is better than bidding it now. Right now, there's a bit of turmoil in the marketplace. It's very difficult to get barge oars and, and other things. But, uh, I, I would, I, I think that we'll be within, uh, 20 or 25% of the $1 million budget. And the other thing is that we, we'll, we'll give you options in terms of construction, of things that can be eliminated, you know, to meet the budget. For example, we have a series of exterior windows that, uh, will be nice for the cafeteria, but it's expensive to punch holes in those masonry walls and create these openings. So, that would be something that you could do, but you don't have to do in order to get a new kitchen and cafeteria. So, we'll carefully go through that to evaluate alternatives to get it as near the million-dollar budget as possible. And if that's impossible, as I say, uh, all, you know, Tyson is $7,500, and you're not bound to accept the cost of the work.
Correct. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right.
Well, that brings me right to the painted MCA, which we've, um, spoke about just a little bit, but, uh, again, floor to ceiling paint job. Um, it turned out absolutely beautiful. I think that the high school looks amazing at this point. You're gonna be very impressed.
I, I will say this, that we went in to paint the hallways and the commons area and, and the cafeteria, but the, the classrooms also need to be done at some point. So, we'll assess how much that would be, and whether or not we can complete that sometime, because we'd really like to be able to get into that five-year rotation where all the schools are done, and everything's done like they should be done. And, you know, we're, we're playing catch-up. We're playing catch-up, and, uh, this initiative of painting the hallways is, when you go in there, it's really amazing to see the difference. I mean, it's that stark of a difference.
As well as the hallway, the, um, dome that is right outside of the walkway when you walk in, the underneath of that was looking pretty rough, that we'll also have that painted too. Um, and it's gonna really, really make a, um, splash when you walk into the building. Mr. Riddick, if you'll pull up, if you'll take a look at the map here, um, if you'll notice, right on the interstate, there's a block of land that, um, Russi is highlighting right now with his cursor. That's 10 acres. And if you'll back up right behind the baseball field, Russi, that's a little bit, about a four-acre area of pine trees. Um, the situation happens to be that, um, the pine trees are in need of cutting. They've gotten to a point that they were so thick that they're starting to actually deteriorate. Every so often, you're supposed to be thinning trees out and giving them room to grow, but we've had those trees there and just let them be there. So, they're at a point where they're no longer gonna be getting more valuable, that we're gonna start losing money from them as they die out in the middle and things of that nature. So, we've got a cost from, uh, we've got a proposal from a local, um, lumberjack that is ready to come and cut those trees. We'll be making a little bit of money, approximately $32,000 is what the lumber that we could get off of that land, as well as clear a little bit out behind that baseball field for possibilities of anything that we want, uh, and especially replanning for the future. So, that is something that we just wanted to bring to your attention. I'll be providing Dr. Pulis a little more detailed explanation of exactly, um, what we'll make. Um, it's all estimates right now, because you don't get an actual price until you actually weigh the lumber and grind it up, and see what trees are on there, whether it's, um, pulp wood or it's, um, lumberboard wood. That's all in the mix. We did have the, um, property crews, they call it, and by a forester, and he went in and, um, gave us some estimated of, amounts of what we have in chip saw, what we have in, um, board lumber, and that's where we came up with an approximate $32,000.
Now, I will say this, that once, you know, if the board approves to carry this as excess wood for us, so that we can cut it, um, as excess wood for us so that we can cut it, um, what we'll end up doing is then you clear the land again and replant. That might be a great project for our ag classes, um, just to see and watch them grow and, and do everything like that. So, uh, ten acres is not, you know, an enormous amount for anybody to, to be willing to come in and cut, but this particular local company is willing to get in there and do that, and in, in the long run, it'll be good for us.
Um, Dr. Poulis makes a great point, that it wasn't easy to get a company to come in, so we were blessed to have, um, Freddie Fender. He's a, a, a really sharp man, uh, been in the business for a while, and he's going to, he's given us the proposal. Again, more information to come. This is just to make you aware that, that we're, um, seeking out, uh, that possibility.
All right. Any questions on anything we covered under goal area two? Do you want to continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
He's on call, so we have...
He's on call, right. Goal area three is culture and climate, and the first thing up there is obviously COVID protocol for the next school year, and, you know, it's been so fluid, and we're going to tell you what we know today, based on what the CDC put out, and our plan for implementation for the school year. And I, I think we're all at the point that we want COVID to be gone, we want to go back to normal, but we also still also must understand that it's still around, and we still have to have some procedures put in place that are prudent for the protection of both the, our visitors, our, our students, and our staff and faculty. So, Mr. Massa, if you'll highlight some of the things that we know to be true as it stands today?
Well, we've learned so much over this, um, experience of COVID, and, um, we're a stronger system for it, actually, I believe. Uh, in the, in the end, we are going to continue with our hand-washing protocols, with our sanitation protocols. Um, those things won't change. There'll still be hand sanitizing stations strategically paced throughout the, each of the buildings. We are encouraging the teachers to continue with, uh, making sure that, um, things are, our hands are washed on a, a regular basis. Masks are optional next year in the building. Um, we will have them provided. Anybody that wants a mask, there's no problem with that. We have plenty. We've ordered enough for every school. It's optional. However, on the buses, it's not our rule, but it's, uh, from the state, that all tran, public transportation masks are required.
That has not changed. So, as it stands today, we're still, I'll say, most likely going to have to require the mask on the buses, but we're going to continue to review that. We still have a month, and we'll see what comes of it. But, you know, they are sitting closer than three feet apart typically, and, you know, I, I think it's, it was very effective last year, and most of our kids did it, and, and there, we didn't have any major problems, uh, as far as issues with breathing, et cetera. Uh, the kids are used to it already. I would like to get to the part where we don't have to do that, but the CDC guidance is very clear. I'm, I'm wary of that right now.
The quarantine policy or procedures that we had in place last year, that we, um, became very good at, of, um, contact tracing and making sure that, um, we made everybody aware are still in place. The only change for that is that if you are a vaccinated person, and you are a close contact, you are not required to quarantine. So, that's big news for all those teachers that, um, did get vaccinated, and for everybody that got vaccinated, knowing that if you are considered a close contact, that you won't have to do those quarantine dates. Um, besides that, again, our, our cleaning procedures are hand-washing, and, um, just the awareness of coughing and spitting and, and that will make us bet, stronger throughout the system, even with the flu, with all, all the other things that are not COVID-related that are spread easily. I think that, um, we'll see less of that even moving forward. Any questions?
You know, the vaccination, uh, is available for, you know, the teenagers, if they want to get it. Um, we're not requiring it, obviously. Yeah, our staff and faculty, many of them, I think it's close to fifty percent of our staff and faculty who are immunized. So, you know, I, I think that we're in a good position. Um, going into the year, like to get back as much as, as normal as possible, but we're still going to be very cautious, and I think that's a prudent step at this point. Any questions at all from anybody about COVID protocol? All right. Next area up here is sickly bank annual review. This is just a report to let everybody know, our, our policy requires us to, to provide this information. So, at the beginning of last year, on the first of July, we had sixteen hundred and eighty-four sick bank days, uh, put aside. We added forty-three new members, and we added, uh, with the old members, they contribute each year, and so we had a total in, in September of seventeen ninety-three. We used it twice, two employees, one for sixty days and one for thirty-five. And remember, the people that are granted this, um, are for catastrophic reasons only. So, uh, that's, that's a big deal as it comes into this. So, I do think that, um, you know, we've managed it well. We're still, we're still about where we were at last year. All right. Any questions on the sick leave bank and where we stand? Next area up here is just, uh, to review again the field trip and excursions. I do think that, uh, we put this out last work session, and we approved it to be on there for thirty days, and so, we'll ask again for next board meeting for it to be approved. This lines up a, a lot dealing with what our chaperones and sponsors and everybody else needs to do in the event of, of a, a field trip or an excursion. And I think the details of this are well-needed. Talks about ratios of students to, to teachers, and as well as, you know, background checks, and the miles, and overnight stays, et cetera. So, this is, uh, in my opinion, a good thing to be put in place, and I'm just ask for the board to approve it next week. Any questions on field trips and excursions policy? Okay.
I'll have a, um, question on that, but I do have it concerning the sick bank.
Yep.
Um, with, with the new members versus the old members, um, how do you calculate? Because I know they probably have a certain amount of hours already in there before the new people. How do you calculate the, um...
I, I, I think it's two, it depends on how long they got there, but typically, it's two days, because they, they go one year without, based on the old policy, and they contributed two days for the new folks. If they were, if they went in throughout the new policy, it was one day, so that you'll see a little difference on it. But then, the old, the old ones just continued with that one day.
And that's their contribution?
That's their contribution into the bank. And so, and that's, you know, to me, that, that's a policy that I continue to push, because you never know when a catastrophic event's going to happen in your life, and I can't tell you the number of times I've had somebody that has walked in my office saying they don't have enough leave, they have cancer, the medical conditions, and the, with this policy, if they're part of the bank, it at least covers them up to sixty days, uh, as well as our individuals that, uh, give birth, um, you know, their, their spouse, if there's a member of the school system, can automatically contribute by law to their leave, so there's some great advantages. But you have to have the sick leave bank policy in place in order to do it. All right. So, next area up here would be under goal area four, quality workforce, and this is, again, was put on the agenda and approved to be put there for thirty days. This adds the new requirement that the state implemented for parental leave, when you adopt or have a foster or give birth. So, uh, this puts it in place, and if some, if, they have to provide certain criti, certain documents, need the criteria in order to get it, but they get up to three weeks of paid leave now, based on the new law, and this is, this aligns that up. So, it asks again next week that we approve that. The only other one, uh, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, if I can talk real quick about goal area five before we go into personnel. Um, I do have, um, Corbin Thomas here. She's our new parent involvement. I wanted everybody to be able to put a, a face with a name, uh, as well as just to, to peruse the, and I'm going to call it a plan, because it's, it's not really a policy, but it's a plan. And so, there's a lot of criteria in here. It's pretty standard stuff, but, you know, being able to have a face so you can see it, uh, see her, ask her any questions that you may have, but we're excited to have her on board and to implement this. I would tell you that as, uh, our parents are, are stakeholders, that we oftentimes, um, don't get enough involvement, and so, you've got a, a heavy task in front of you, and we're really looking forward to you being able to pull those parents in and get them involved, and, um, so that we do everything possible to, because with them, we know that we can benefit our students.
Yes.
Can you, um, tell us just a little bit about yourself? You can stand up right there.
Most of the board knows me, but, um, I have a history with working with EBA, some I served in child support services, um, working with, doing investigations, as well as working with foster children and placing them and making sure their needs were met. And for the last two and a half years, I've been working with the Gateway APEX program, which serves the schools here, um, with mental health needs. In that position, I served as a case manager, which means I worked directly with the parents, as well as the kids, um, working on skill building, but also with connection to community resources, um, and making sure that they're connected there, because as well as hierarchy of need, if we're not meeting their basic needs, then we can't meet their mental health needs.
Yep.
So, I'm really looking forward to working on a wider range of the kids.
We're excited to have you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
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 All right. So, a, again, this is a plan. I would just ask that next meeting that we, um, if you take a look at it, have any questions about it, bring to our attention, we'll adjust it, and then we can put it in place. Okay? Barring that, uh, Madam Chair, the only thing else I have is, uh, personnel to go into executive session.
Do we have legal or just personnel?
Just personnel.
Okay. Could I have a motion to go to executive session for personnel?
Say me.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Motion carries four one. I mean, four zero. One's not here.
All right.
Okay, the Board of Education slipped out my hand. Had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. McIver, second.
Say me.
Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. All right, board comments. I'll start tonight, since I never do. Um, I'd just like to tell the students and staff to enjoy the rest of your vacation. It's not long now. Time to come back to school. Um, be safe, but have a fun summer, or what's left of it. I'd also like to ask everybody to keep in their prayers, um, Mr. Waites Jenkins' family, um, Ms. Wilbur, many of our, um, former employees, our loved ones have since passed, and also Ms. Wanda Nelson's daughter, um, Robin. So, keep those families in your prayers.
Madam Chair, I don't have anything. Thank you, though.
Mr. McIver?
I'm good. Oh, wow.
I'm good, too. I'm just excited that we can actually get back to normal this year, so everything's good.
Just to let everybody know, the, the very first football game is in Savannah, Savannah Christian, on the sixth of August, and then that's followed by our first home game, which is thirteenth of August. So, we're a month out from our home games, and we have seven, seven home events this year. So, uh, there's a lot going to happen out there at MCA. And then, the other thing to let the board know about is our new employee breakfast. We'll start at eight o'clock on the thirtieth. We're going to host it here, um, as well that the chamber's putting it on, but we're going to, we're going to hold that here and roll right into the, um, benefits briefing. That, that'll be held, because it's easier to pull them all together and get that done. So, and then, we have, I already mentioned that the open house, you're welcome to come to that and meet and greet, and anything else that you don't need.
Did you, okay, that's July thirtieth, Dr. Poulis?
July thirtieth, yes, ma'am.
What time?
Breakfast will start at eight o'clock, right here.
All right, Rachey?
Nothing from me.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.